Seven thirty, we'll open the meeting.
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Yeah, I can't tell time yet.
(laughing).
Six thirty. We'll open the meeting and we'll start off with citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments today?
Yes, I'm here to ask the board to reconsider their current position on dealing with Pedicullosus corpus. I assume that the board, the superintendent was going to be able to explain it to the general public, what the current procedure is. I don't know if he's coming back on it, is he?
Yes, yes, he's right to his car.
Well, does it, do any of you know what this? It's basically how the school district, in this school in particular, deals with body lice. Current policy is that there's absolutely no notification at all to parents, teachers, that this condition exists. I had a situation where a student that I'm aware of had the body lice. I brought it to the attention of the school nurse and it ended there. To me, it's inconceivable that the school system is not notifying parents that there is possibly a problem with their children. This is a problem that is not going to go away once it hits a family. It has to be treated. There's a fairly expensive and a very extensive prophylactic regimen that you have to go through to get rid of these lice. They feed on the bodies of the children that are here. They feed on the blood. And to me, I can't conceive of an idea that a board would say, "We're not going to tell the parents that this child has the lice and we're not going to tell them to check their own children to see that they can stave off the situation." I guess I'd like to know how it is that you assume that this is right, to do this.
Can I have a clarifying, Don? We do contact parents if we find it here at school of the child that gets it. We do do that.
Well, that may be true.
Okay.
No one ever contacted me.
We didn't find?
The point is, the point is this. Every child should be notified, every parent should be notified if there's a situation in the classroom where there's a possibility of body lice. Does anybody disagree? I'm asking the board, do you disagree with that?
Well, just to, just to be fair, this is comments and we're listening to you.
Yeah.
And we don't necessarily, we want to take in all information, like what it actually is the policy right now.
This is a policy right now.
Well...
That's why I'm here.
One of the, one of the public comment, we try not to engage back and forth.
Right.
Because it opens up dialogue that can lead you down.
That's what, that's what I was getting to.
So, we're listening to your comment, I think, as the board, you know, we can, if we want to put on a future meeting, you know, as something we can put on a meeting to discuss.
I'm sorry I didn't hear you.
If it's something we need to put on a future meeting, we can put it on a future meeting and discuss as a policy and have a discussion as a board. I think now, you know, would be, you know, is now the right time to do it because we're just hearing it firsthand.
What is the right time to do it?
Well, you've brought it up.
Yes.
And that now we can, you know, put it on the agenda, we can look at, look at our policy to see what it is, talk to Jeff to see how it's actually working right now and see if we can improve it and then we'll go that way. Because right now, you're asking us to make a statement on something that we don't have all the information.
I guess I was aware, I guess I assumed that you were all aware of this policy in the district and in the school system. That's not true then.
Well, we do, we, we do have a policy, but we, as Jeff says, we're not going to get into a discussion. This is for comments. Comments are for you to bring forth to us and then we will take what you say and bring it forth.
How do you bring it forth?
Well, it'll be in a future, once we have our information, we could, we can do whatever we want with it. We can put it on the agenda for, for future reference or whatever to, to change the policy.
I guess I'd like an opinion from each of you as to whether or not you feel parents should be notified of the possibility of body lice infestation in this district.
Well, what I'm saying is...
I just want your opinion.
We try and...
What's your opinion, yes or no?
I, I would like to have more information before I give out a complete opinion. And this is what it is supposed to be. It's supposed to be comments, it's not supposed to be a back and forth. I know you would rather have it that way, but we have to take it and absorb it, contact the, the policy area of the, of the SU and see where it stands and then go from there.
Let me read a comment from the American Pediatric Association and then I'll leave you. "Children should not be excluded from school or sent home early because of head lice. Parents of children with infestation should be notified and informed that their child should be treated. There's an extensive treatment that's needed. But why would you not tell another parent in the same classroom that there's a possibility that their child might be infected? Not just zeroing in on a poor kid who has it, but what about the rest of the classroom? I'd want to know if my child was in that classroom, that there's a possibility that exists, that they could have this infestation. And I would hope that the board and the district would see the error of what they're now doing and that is not informing the general public in the school system, in a classroom, that there's a possibility of a real problem."
That's, that's true. Just for my own thoughts, first you said body lice and then you said head lice. That's two different animals.
This is body lice is what I'm talking about.
Because you just said head lice on that one.
Well, this is what the American Academy says, not me.
All right, so that's, that's basically what I was, what my thought to it.
I understand. But how do we move from this discussion to something?
We'll put it, we'll, we'll put it on, put it on the agenda, not unless somebody else wants it. Put it on the agenda and let us look up information and talk to people about it before we make a public commitment.
We have to gather all the information based around it. We have to look at the policy, we have to gather the information and then, I mean, we can't just make a decision right now.
I don't expect it, I just would hope that you would look at it carefully and to keep in mind the welfare of the children. Because they're the ones that have to bear this burden and the parents need to be notified of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will know. Anybody else with a public comment? Thank you. We'll go on to our makerspace.
So I'm going to give the floor to our PTO president in just a second, but I want to acknowledge a couple of people that are in the crowd. We have Frank Barnes, he's our technology director for the, for the SU. He's joining us for this meeting, as well as Chris Roffe, he's our technician here at Shasberry. CJ Brownout, she's our PTO president for the past couple of years. She's done a great job of getting that organization into a really good place where we have a nice vision and, and mission. And one of those things is to really have a idea of what we want to put those funds toward with the PTO fundraising that we do. And this makerspace that I've talked about last couple of months is one of those things and she really wants to tell you all about it and give you kind of an introduction to it for a little field trip for, in a second.
So as Jeff alluded to, the makerspace, we started that program this year, but it initially was brought to us by Chris and Jeff at the end of last year, when we were looking forward to say in the next year of 2017, 2018, what are the projects we wanted to concentrate on. And we had put a few things and one of them was the makerspace and when we looked into it at the beginning of the year, it really hit home for us because we were trying to find projects that were widespread audience, so that would touch all the students and have kind of a lasting impact. What kind of takeaway would the investments have? And one of the big things for us was the whole science, technology, arts, graphics, everything that the makerspace has. Have any of you seen makerspaces or heard of them? Okay, well, I'm going to leave the details itself to Chris and the tour because I could talk for hours and you don't want to stay here that long. But part of the great thing is that it's, again, it's that science but fun, you know. Everybody knows a kid wants to have fun, not just be taught something. And the makerspace is all hands-on and they're having so much fun, they don't even realize they're learning. Having two boys in the school system now, they've already spoke about the projects they've done and they love it. To come home and hear them talk about all this stuff and you start asking them technical questions, which they used to, and they're answering you and they don't even realize that they've just learned something from electronics or physics or something because they just had fun. And the concepts there is just phenomenal and all the teachers have shown a great commitment to using it and it has everything there. So at this point, the PTO has committed about $5,500 some odd dollars to it and we've completed phase one, started on phase two. For next year, we're actually looking into doing more grants and donations from companies. And part of the reason I'm here is, one of the things, the company's feedback initial was, is they're willing to commit and help with us, but they want to see our commitment. They don't want to be the first ones to fund it, they want to make sure we're really rooted in it. And that's kind of what pushed us this year to commit so much money. Part of what we are looking to do is some major equipment, which again, I'm going to allude to Chris for that later. So we're kind of giving you a heads up and we're going to do a little bit of a sell pitch because I'm not going to lie. Next year, we're probably going to be sitting back here, not just bragging about what we're doing, but hopefully looking for some support as well. And I'm sure without a doubt, we're going to have a lot more success stories than what you're going to see tonight. And hopefully, maybe bring in some kids and sell you on it too. So again, after the meeting, immediately after Jeff does, Jeff spoke of the tour, Chris will be available as well as Ms. Akins to show you some of the projects they've done for her regiment while they're here. Thank you.
So I'd like to take the board for a quick tour of the makerspace. It won't take but a few minutes to kind of see some of the projects we're doing and some of the stuff we have set up there and the work that we've done this year if they would oblige.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's go to the superintendent's report.
Good evening. First thing I want to say is, walking in here today and seeing one of the windows, it says, "We love kindergarten, class of 2030."[781.13][781.13](laughing). Wow. You know, and it's, I know we're almost, we're winding down the school year, they've been 2030 all year, but just to see it up on the window, kind of, you know, it's only 13 years away, I know. So, appreciate seeing that on your school window.
Thanks.
Any one of these you got?
I got one.
This is a school calendar for next year. It's up on our website, just for some of you that may be at the SU and everything, it's going to be a repeat. The process that we use for setting the calendar, it's a regional calendar. That, what that means is, the Career Development Center, we're, we're around the Career Development Center because students come from different school districts, so we meet with the Arlington Superintendent and the Career Development Superintendent. And this is by statute, by Vermont law, we have to develop a regional calendar, try to align our school vacations to all the other districts so that a student who goes from our district or goes from Arlington, goes to the Career Development Center and they're not missing two weeks of school as opposed to one. So, it's not always possible to have perfect alignment because not all school districts in Vermont go the same amount. Some do 175 student days, we do 180. And our professional learning days are not always aligned. But, and we had to submit this, we always have to submit this count to the state by April 1st, so that has happened. Last day of school, I told you last month I'd have a recommendation when we get to April. What I'm going to ask the board to do tonight to approve that June 22nd is the last day of school for students. It'll, you'll still meet the 175-day requirement, you'll be at 177 days. Staff will still report the following week, they have four days that we would still have to go for them to make their required amount of workdays. We'll be really working in schools on the individual school improvement plans and that is being developed with the principals and our Director of Curriculum Development, Laura Boudreaux, on what will actually take place on those days. So if I could have a motion from the board to approve that the last day of school for students to be Friday, June 22nd. And I should point out that it's been voted in Woodford and Pownell so far, but until all the boards approve it, because you all share the same bus contract, so it's not etched in stone yet, but we're getting there.
I'll make a motion to end the school year on June 22nd.
For students.
Students.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The only thing that I have, Dave's not here, so your representatives to the SU Board are, who? No, you. And I don't know what you want to do with this. This came, this was discussed at the, at the SVSU Board proposal by one of your board members and asked to bring to your own board, so I give that to you. If you get to your committee reports, if you want to discuss whether you want to take any action on that. We did receive that email from the Woodford Board Member who made that proposal at the SU meeting. So, it is about, it's really about taking a stand about arming teachers. So, that was proposed by Dick Franz from Woodford. He asked the SU Board to take a vote, stance against it, discussed it, the SU Board, he just bringing it to us here tonight, really, we've got to have time to discuss this. And then some members present said, "The SU Board members are really representatives of their own boards, so they really should have a discussion with it first at their own board and then decide what they, if you want, when you come back." I imagine it'll be on the agenda at an SU meeting in the future, so. So some would say, "Well, why wasn't this brought to the policy board?" And I, you know, I feel like I'm speaking for the maker of the motion here, but I did say I would make sure that it gets to all boards, was that that's a lengthy, that's a very lengthy policy, process, six months minimum. And they're asking really for a statement from the SU Board about that because of concern that something may happen legislatively before this, this outcome. So, I just bring it to your attention, do with it as you will. And it's really only the items I have for you tonight, unless you have any questions for me.
No, I don't have anything.
All right, well, if you excuse me, I'm going to head to North Bennington, but for their meeting. Thank you, I enjoyed seeing the makerspace, great work. I have a keen interest in, in those things because I have a technology background, those of you who don't know about me, and I also have quite a lot of work in audiovisual and television, some work in television production. So it's the whole green screen and very impressive, so, thank you and everyone left before.
I've got, I've got one question. The staff has got four extra days. Do we have to, why do you have those at the end of the year? Can we do them during, during the year so it's kind of, kind of spreads it out?
So, the reason why, we wouldn't normally have them, except that we canceled school. So the students are technically supposed to be in school until the 27th of June, the staff to the 28th. The difference is, one of the snow days that got canceled this year was a staff development day, in-service day, there was no students in school. So, in order for all the teachers to make their contractual obligation to work the amount of days that they have to work so that we can pay them their full salary, that's why they're, they're, they need to go to the 28th. And why wouldn't we do them in the middle of the day? I mean, say, because there was a proposal that like, let's do some four-day weeks and the teachers would, you know, the kids could go home every Friday and the staff would do those professional development days, but it, we still have to get the same amount of days in, so it really, it wouldn't work. And I don't know how parents would necessarily like having their kids off every Friday from daycare issues. So, it really comes down to making sure that the staff works the required amount of days so that we can pay them their full salary. Because they're contracted for 187 and a half days, that's how many they have to work. And it was 188 and a half, the last negotiating round of negotiations eliminated one of those SU days. So, and Jeff probably can speak to this better than I can, the planning for those days, it is imperative work that needs to be done. I agree that it's not the best weather and conditions and that's why we're saying, well, let's get the students out on the 22nd. Late June is not conducive to good education. But, we had nine days canceled, eight student days and one extra additional staff day. We had seven delays this year and one early release. I've never seen that many days. Some of those days I might have gotten the calls wrong, you know, but again, it's a big geographic district and what it's doing up here in Shasberry, like especially here, you know, in Bennington, the streets were wet. Well, not, not in Shasberry Hall or not up in Woodford, you know. And that's one universal bus contract. And the bus contractor tells me he doesn't feel safe to run his buses, then we don't have school. I wish it, you know, and we did, there were, there was talk about canceling April vacation. And, you know, we, we met with the union, we had discussions with them, we met administratively, we talked about it. But, you know, we were still, our last snow day was March 13th. And by March 13th, deciding that then you're going to cancel April vacation a month later, attendance would have taken a huge hit. Staff as well as, as, and as far as getting a waiver from the state, unless we did something like that, we most likely would not get a waiver from the state for the requirements. I mean, the boards could all make a decision, I guess, that they, but they would have to be universal of all the boards to decide that, well, we're just going to forgive those four days and the staff can go home on June 22nd, but then you'll be paying them for four days that they didn't work. But the boards would have to make that decision, I can't do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Is the warrant signed yet? Can I take that?
Um, no.
No, because we haven't voted on it yet.
We got, we'll vote on it right now.
I'll wait.
We'll go right down to the consent agenda. On the motion on the...
On the Treasury report? I'll make the motion on the Treasury report to approve it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Should I send that? Okay. Well, I was going to write the consent.
Oh, yeah.
He doesn't care, but I just want a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion on the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion. No discussion?
Well, you know, for us, you know, we have a resignation, resignation. Resignation there, Tom St. Helier, we have to probably approve, so I didn't make the motion to approve his leave as he's going to San Diego.
Yep.
I want to thank, I want to thank Tom for, he's been here since I've been here five years, so I want to thank him for his service here. He's been a great addition to Shasberry and I want to wish him luck in his, his life in California.
No snow days there.
No. Doesn't have to worry about that.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept.
You have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Want to sign that? Okay. So we've passed the consent agenda.
We had to do the resignation, now we have to do the resignation.
Do all the rest of it.
Yeah.
We're out of the rest.
Oh, we did that?
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that was your, now we got it. You made a motion just on resignation?
Just in the resignation, yeah.
So now we want a motion on the rest of the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion, the rest of the consent agenda for the minutes and the warrants.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry, Mr. Trump, can I, before I leave, can I bring up one more thing as I open, as I go to close my folder?
Tony, there's my sigh.
I have a memorandum of agreement between the, all the school boards and the support staff. So here's the explanation that was given to me. Memorandum for the ESP union contract is needed to, is needed due to a miscommunication between the attorneys in regards to the language of section 183 of the contract. The language in the final version contract did not accurately reflect the health insurance plans that were agreed to. This memorandum corrects the language to reflect accurately what was negotiated and what the boards already approved. It is consistent with the negotiation overview presented to the boards and is used to approve the contract. This is simply a correction of language and that came from our attorney. And the memorandum has been signed by the association, but I need the Chair of all the boards to sign that, so.
That's for health insurance?
On health insurance, yeah.
Does that need to be voted, Jim?
It's a language correction? I mean, I suppose it could, yeah.
Should we vote just to be safe?
Might as well.
I'll make the motion that we accept the memorandum and we'll agree it for the contracts.
I'll second.
Language change.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if you do discuss it on the, as you report, those are additional copies.
Good.
Thank you. I really am. It's you.
That is, that talk is tough though.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, Jim. Okay, we've taken care of the minutes.
Policies.
Policies. We did the budget status report, okay. Policies. We do adopt these, safeties and security of employees. Is there any questions on that, Tony?
No. Policy number, policy number 4400, like I said, that one was ready to be adopted when I showed up at the meeting.
Yep.
They must have talked to it prior of taking out the word healthy, or adding the word healthy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there wasn't much, there wasn't much of a change.
Right.
Okay.
And then moving on to policy 7300, public participation at board meetings. We will be taking out line 14 and 15 in a timely manner at the end and pulling out the line that says, "The school boards and prudential committee reserve the right to eliminate public comment, agenda items. When a meeting is posted as executive session only, that will be removed." And then, like I said, at the end, basically the last line of the whole policy, in a timely manner.
Yep.
It's kind of said already in the sentence and we're saying it again and it kind of confuses people. This one has been sent out, you know, for warning. So I just wanted to bring it to you guys, you can talk, we can talk about it if you want. It made pretty good sense to me when I was there.
Yeah, it's just a wording thing.
It's just wording, yeah. It's not changing the policy at all.
We need a motion to adopt number 4400.
I'll make the motion to adopt 4400.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I'll make the motion for policy 7300, public participation at board meetings.
I just want to warn that one.
Okay. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Well, I just want to make a comment, you know, just, just, you know, because we had it tonight, on the second page, line 10, you know, "If questions are directed by the public to the school board or presidential committee on topics that have not been posted as agenda item, answer shall be deferred pending timely consideration by the full school board, presidential committee and respective districts and supervisory union administrative." You know, that's what kind of happened tonight, which is, we have to make sure that we do defer those questions.
Do defer those back, yeah.
Because it is a policy, so. Because it is a policy, so we had a question to policy, so we had to defer because it's our policy, so. We just had to make sure we make it clear to the public.
And as you see right there, pending timely consideration, and then we had it ending in, in a timely manner. So we were saying it basically twice.
Yeah.
For no reason. So, you know, just something to put out there for people.
Just so that people who are listening to us, they know that if they bring something up, it's just an informational thing. It is not for comments back and forth.
Yeah, right.
I think we can ask clarifying questions, just, but, I mean, that's where I'd like to leave it.
That's, that's good, because that's, that's basically what we were talking about with the gentleman.
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay, vote on that one.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's passed. What do you got on facilities, Jeff?
Renee asked me to bring this to you guys, to see if you guys would approve this tonight. So we use TAM for our trash recycling and composting. We've used them for several years now and their agreement is up. It's up every year. Jay and I both agreed that we're happy with their service, and so I'm asking the board to make a motion to approve, to continue with their service. He has agreed to keep the rate the same for this year. We can only vote one year at a time per, per statute, so, but if we continue past this year, it would be a 2% increase for years two and three. So, but he's willing to keep it at 0% increase for this year.
Now is that some of the new policies at his end for waste management, I guess, increase? Because I know there's, I know there's something coming down from waste haulers.
Right.
I don't, I don't know that.
He, he just raised, he's raised for, just this year for-
For residential.
Residential.
But he's leaving this one alone for this year. 2%? I mean, what's that equivalent to dollars?
Well, his, his contract's not a whole lot as it is, you know, so it's not, not too much. But we're very happy with the service.
Okay.
So I would need a motion to accept the-
We need a motion to accept-
To renew, to renew the contract.
I'll make the motion to renew TAM for another year.
I will second it.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
So that's for 18, fiscal 19?
Yes.
Fiscal 19, yes.
No personnel, but we are, as you saw, Tom redesigned effective at the end of this year, and I have posted the position. It's posted till the end of next week, the 20th, I believe, and I'll then put an interview team together and hopefully bring a nomination to you next month to fill that position.
You got anything else on your report?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Spaghetti dinner, sixth grade spaghetti dinner, as I mentioned last month, was March 30th. It was a great turnout, once again. I think close to $4,000 was raised for the sixth grade, between the dinner, the raffle, the silent auction. We had, we had a great time. Funds go toward their graduation, their yearbooks, and they have an end of the year trip that they do together to kind of say the good, through goodbyes and stuff. So I want to thank all the parents. It takes a lot of work to put that night off. Not just that night, but to prep for that night and to get the donations. So I want to thank all the parents and teachers that helped out for that. I also want to thank all the community individuals and organizations that donated to our silent auction. I think it was one of our largest silent auctions we've had in, in recent years, and there was quite a, quite a bit donated. It was a lot of fun though.
Great.
Good time. After, after Semahai, it is, our after-school program is back up and running. We had close to 70 students participate in drama, tennis, art activities, outdoor games and Funwood Circuit, which is some of our Maker Space stuff. Our next session will be right after spring break, which is the week after next. And we're going to have sewing, fact fluency, Spanish, sign language, cooking, yoga, tennis and art. I want to thank Kara Scary. She's a par here, but she stepped up and has helped coordinate those sessions for us this year, and she's going to continue into next year as far as I know. So we're pretty excited with that. If you didn't hear, we had our first performance from the drama club this afternoon. It was Lorax. That was a huge hit. The kids had four weeks to prepare, and it was a wonderful show. It was a great show. Cheryl Manns did a great job with that. That was mostly our first, second, third, fourth graders. And then finally, May is our, our month of assessments. Our K2, we're taking our spring benchmark and fast bridge. And then our third, fourth, fifth and sixth, we're taking math, I'm sorry, math and reading fast bridge. Our four, three, four, five and six, we're taking maps and our S-BACS in, in May. And then our fifth grade will also be taking our science state assessment in May. So it's, there's quite a few assessments coming up, and so we're glad we have spring break to get rested up and, and hopefully we do well in those assessments this spring. That's all I have.
Are they making plans for their, for a trip in later this year?
Yep. Nature's Classroom is, is, they had a parent meeting last week, I want to say, or the week before. Nature's Classroom representative came down and talked with some parents. They're going the week, a week in May before Labor Day, I believe. Yep.
Good.
Yep.
Okay. I don't have anything. I'll bring it up to Southern, up late and under the other. I don't really have anything else to report. I don't think we have any SVSU report, other than, other than this. I'll bring it up under SVSU. This is what weapons position statement, the, the SU has brought this to us. I read it, "The Southwest Vermont Supervisor Union, its members' school districts value the work performed every day by all personnel, including teachers. School personnel consistently perform tasks beyond their job descriptions. The SVSU will not ask these personnel to accept the additional responsibility to carry arms. The SVSU will not support arming teachers, volunteers or other school personnel. While the Gun Free Schools Act discourages weapons in the school environment, it does allow for exceptions under certain conditions. The SVSU will acknowledge the exception only for trained police officers that will comply with directives in policy 5089, weapons prohibit, prohibited, prohibition, sure, other than students." That's, that's, that's what was, basically, it's, with the discussion going on nationally, they brought up the fact that, they had brought up the fact that they wanted to harm teachers and more along the line. And we just wanted to make it a position for our area. That, that was brought up by SVSU. I don't know if anybody has any questions about it.
I, the next policy meeting, we are reviewing policy 5089. I don't think we want to change it, but I think we're just looking through it and, and, you know, making sure that everybody's adopting it and has it.
Right. I think, I think basically, this has nothing to do with 58, 5089.
Right.
This is just because there was a big push that armed teachers.
Right.
And-
No, I just wanted to throw that in.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're working on, they're working on that in the whole thing. And if you want, you can, I'll bring it toward the next SVSU meeting, which is this month. Because they're going to bring it up, if you want me to make a statement on it, that this, that we prefer teachers not to be armed here in Shasberry.
Yep, I'm good with that.
You're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll, I'll bring that.
Prefer that.
I'll bring that up to the SVSU.
I mean, I think there's other safety things we could put in place that are not arming individuals.
I agree with it completely.
Okay. SVSU, moment, Act 46. We had our meeting on Act 46. Really didn't accomplish much.
Basically what it looks like, so there should be a set of meetings coming up.
Right.
June, July, August, with a final, say, eventually in October of what, wherever they land in Act 46.
Yep.
It was just basically, the last meeting was a, if you had questions, for them to know, they're going to review all the section nines, then come up with a plan. And so they'll probably touch base with all the boards again in June.
In Ju, are they going to do that in June?
They said three means, June, July, August.
I thought it was July, August, September.
July, August, September.
But I don't know, I could be wrong.
Is there a timeline for-
September for the southern part of the state.
Yeah.
Right, that's what they said, September.
Was there a timeline for a decision?
November?
End of October.
End of October.
By the first of November.
For implementation, July 1st next year.
So I mean, I guess if people want to get feedback, this is the time that they could write to the state, because they're going to start looking for public comments. So if there's public comments, either they want the board to bring up, when that time comes for us to make that public comment. You know, just, you know, put your thoughts together, I think.
The minutes from that meeting just got sent out today.
Today.
Yep. Okay. Okay. We got, we got anything else?
I just wanted to bring up one thing. Last meeting we asked about, I think Jeff, I think you asked about the cost of a resource officer.
Yes.
Do we know if we ever got what it costs, Bennington?
Well, I think it's, I think it sounded like what Dick was saying, that it's Ben and PT's, you know, if that's their officer. And so realistically, they can pull them anytime.
Right. But I know there's a, I know there's a cost to the schools, and I think he was going to try to get that for us, wasn't it, wasn't it Vic that was going to try to get that for us?
I could ask him about that. I mean, you could even look at, you know, what's the cost of an officer? And, you know, does Shasberry want to contract with the sheriff or something for a full-time position?
Right.
Which is probably going to put you in the 40-ish, who knows?
Their, their rate is $20 an hour when we contract with them for other things.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if, even, even if you're thinking about that, you may not want even a full-timer.
Yeah, so I mean, that's something I think is another.
Well, I think if we had a number though, we could at least look at it.
Look at it, yeah, that's right, because you want all the information you can get.
Right.
I'll try to get it for next month for you.
Okay. Right.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.